Good afternoon, welcome to the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education Study Session on the Bond Program and Future Projects or Future of Projects. Dr. Bergy, I see nobody up here, I assume you'll call someone to the dais of power.
Thank you, thank you for that introduction and welcome to our study session. And I would like to call up our construction team, Mr. Will Karat and Amin Salari. And Elliot as well. Or Elliot's just moving to a better seat.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us here to describe our future bond projects and some value engineering ideas that we were able to come up with. Just to get right to it, I'm just going to introduce Mr. Amin Salari so you can go through our PowerPoint presentation.
Shouldn't be on the screen?
Yeah, it should be.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for participation and listening to this study session. There's a lot of information to digest, I'm very glad to present this presentation today. It's basically the outcome and the result of over a year of work on different value engineering aspects that we had, some of them we were promising in our previous presentations that we don't have a number for that, now we have all those numbers. Again, I want to thank Raphael and Will for supporting all these ideas and working with us, and I want to thank our team to work very diligently to come up with this new kind of reconfiguration of the Beverly Hills site with some ideas that will save some money, and I want to thank DLR team for working with us and helping us to basically make these ideas practical. If you remember, that was the original orientation or configuration of the site when they did the master plan for the site, and some of the things that was costly and we were thinking about making changes, as you can see, your baseball field, softball field, and the football stadium are kind of in the same level, and that needed a lot of earth fork, heavier and heftier retaining walls, and we were thinking, one thing that came to our mind when we started here was what can we do to basically take benefit from the gradual elevations that we have on this site to reduce the amount of money that's going to go toward earth fork and site preparation and shift that money into building an actual facility or project that's going to be beneficial to the students. So, again, you are familiar with this configuration, this was the original plan that to have basically what was called the South Side Project, as your athletic fields, you were supposed to have, I think, like a practice soccer field and tennis courts on the upper area where the maintenance yard is right now, that part of the project has not been designed and wasn't designed or was not in DSA at any time, it was just a conceptual design, and the rest of this is technically the active projects that we have right now. The idea that we came up with was, as you can see, again, use the gradual elevation of the site, or like as the gradual, as the elevation of the site is moving toward lower when we go toward Olympic, to keep the baseball field where it was originally designed and have like two layer or two level of like parking lot as you go toward Vinco Site and Olympic, as you can see in this rendering. We can bring the same size of a standard softball field or where, like on the upper field where the maintenance yard is, and you can have six standard tennis courts in the same area as well. One of the ideas and discussions of the last study session was to have a drop-off area and some sort of parking close to Building C, and as you can see in the like front of Building C left side, that's already, right side, that's already shown here as well, to have a drop-off area with the entrance and exit on Moreno with some like temporary or like parents parking or visitor parking in that area. Also, part of that is a requirement for Building C that you need to have some charging station that also that area can accommodate that need. I think this shows like a better configuration, this is the same thing that you saw in 3D like in 2D, as you can see the football stadium estate as it was originally planned, same as baseball field, you are going to have two level of like parking lots close to Olympic Boulevard, and the lower one is where the Vinco Site was originally, and by doing this, one thing that I want to mention is like you are eliminating the need to have a retaining wall adjacent to Olympic Boulevard, and basically you can just have wrought iron fence over there and that would be cost-saving that we are going to talk about it further. As I mentioned, you are going to have six tennis courts, I want to call that like upper area, like upper athletic field project, so your softball field and tennis courts are going to be up there, you see like a schematic configuration for that drop-off and visitor parking adjacent to Building C, and obviously the Building C in this configuration, the goal is to eliminate the underground parking, because the net number of the parkings that you are going to gain by this configuration is even more than what you had under the building, if I remember correctly, it's 110 or 107 under the building, and we are gaining 121 or...
130 in the lower, about 26 in that Building C.
Yeah, so 130 in the lower and about 26 on that drop-off area. So, original design, the way that they packaged the project and was submitted to DSA and the plan was to move forward to have a Building C project, retaining wall number two, three, four, and five as one project, re-abandonment of legacy oil wells, Grand Lawn, and South Side Athletic Fields, so this was the way that was master-planned and was budgeted for. As I mentioned, the retaining wall number five, if we move this direction, the need to have a retaining wall number five totally would be eliminated, so you don't need to have a retaining wall number five because we are technically matching the elevation of the sidewalk of Olympic Boulevard, on that parking lot is going to be a berm that shift a little bit up, there is another berm that between the two level of the parking lot, so you don't need to have, there is no retainers over there needed. I want to go over items that basically one by one are the savings associated with this new plan. By elimination of Building C underground parking lot approximately 110 stalls, we are going to save 8.4 million dollars, and these numbers are very conservative, again, depending on the timing and how fast we move forward and construction escalation, again, we try to show that the bare minimum saving, this number may be higher than what I am presenting, but this is the number that we are very comfortable with as far as saving. Also, we worked very closely, our team worked with DTSC and our environmental consultants, and there is a chance by making this change, we can have like a crawl space under Building C that would eliminate the need of having a methane mitigation system, that was a requirement by DTSC, but if we do a crawl space under the building, that would be also eliminated, and that's another like 220, $222,000 saving, so that's changes associated to Building C. As I mentioned, by elimination the need of retaining wall number five, we are saving another 2.5, 2.1 million dollars, 2.160, and I just want to refresh your memory that this doesn't include that 1.1 million dollar that we already saved by not demoing the concrete at the bottom of the pit, so we already got the approval from Calgem and DTSC that the concrete can stay there and we can backfill that area, so this 2.16 is like pure saving by not building retaining wall number five. Also, because of changing the elevations at the site and changing the elevation of Building C, the size of the retaining wall number three and four is going to change, that's going to be about another $3 million saving. As part of the design for South Side Project, and I just want to put a parenthesis here, I show this as a saving, but you can decide that we want to do the projects in phase. Basically, what I'm saying here, if we don't build any of the restroom and storage building that was designed as part of Building C at this time, that's about 3.1, 3.150 saving again, but you can always decide to phase this, say we are moving forward with project, but we are going to shift this to a later date, when we have the money, we come back and build this building, you can come up with like temporary storage facilities if needed, and the storage and the restroom buildings that was designed, I'm going to show exactly where the location on those buildings was at the site, that's another 2.1 million. By changing the location of the softball field from where it was originally at the south side and moving that to the upper field, sorry, do you have a question?
No, I'm just going to go down there.
Oh, okay, sorry. By changing that, this is purely a result of the earth fork and grading, there is close to another 300,000, 288,000 saving just because of relocation of the softball field. Another thing that can be phased, there are bleachers designed as part of this project, that those bleachers can be built in a later date if you decide, and that's close to another $2 million saving, so you can build the field but not the bleachers, and we can come back and build them when, again, there are state money available or any other source of funding. My goal was to bring this to a bare minimum that meets all the programming requirement that you had, and you can decide like if from menu, oh, we definitely want to do this or we definitely don't want to do this, but I just want to put that in front of you as an option that you can pick and choose. So that's again, close to another $2 million saving. One other number that we were exploring throughout this year, and I didn't have the number for that, is the pure earth fork that was a result of DTSC requirement to basically excavate the top five feet of the soil and bring in new soil to the site. Again, we worked with DTSC, I am very proud of our team, we challenged like public agencies to come up with a better solution, so the solution that was proposed and everybody was in agreement that it may work, we are still waiting for the final approval of DTSC, is just to have that replace the top one feet of soil and cap it with, cap the rest with the hard escape, by doing that, we are going to have another $4 million saving. So this $4 million purely would go like into the earth with no direct impact on any of your projects, it was like a DTSC requirement, nobody would see it, wouldn't be even if infrastructure added to your campus, so I think this is a huge success for everybody if we move forward and not to do this part. Not only that, there was a lot of logistic challenges around this because of this city ordinance as far as trucking when it needed to be done, the dumps that would receive the earth wouldn't available after hours, so it was, the earth needed to be handled two, three times inside the field, inside the site till we would be able to export it, same for the import, so by not doing all of that, that's another $4 million saving. So the total of these savings is like over $23 million, 23.1 million if we make all these changes the way that I described. On the other hand, we had some additions because they were part of this plan that wasn't fully designed yet, we know that the tennis court and upper field site was not designed, we are adding surface parkings, is about 133 stalls as Elliot mentioned on the south side, the drop-off area was not part of any of the design, the parking and the drop-off area adjacent to Building C, and we are adding a restroom building in the upper field area because that's the longest distance when you do the tennis courts and the softball field comparing to any of your existing buildings, and cost of that one by one, again, tennis courts project is going to be about 3.2, 180, south side parking lots is about another 3.3, drop-off area 1.1, upper field restroom buildings is close to 270, and reconfiguration of the Heath Road as a result of bringing these fields to the upper area, we need to make reconfiguration close to the tennis courts on the Heath Road to make some adjustment to accommodate like the traffic and also the tennis courts, so that's another like 360 or close to $400,000 cost, so the cost of all additions is about 8.4 million dollars or 8.3. The buildings that I was talking that can be phased or we are suggesting to be phased out are this building that's currently right now is part of the South Side Project Design, there are restrooms and storage facilities, again, there could be an interim solution to have interim storage till the funding being available to build this, I just wanted to show those buildings that what we are talking about. And this is technically a balance sheet of what's happening, we are showing the way that we think is the best to group these new projects if we are deciding to move forward this way, so we are seeing Building C and the drop-off area as one building, and these are again, the addition and deletions that we discussed in the past two slides. So, the saving on this one would be deletion of the underground parking, deletion of the methane mitigation system, and adding the drop-off area. The retaining walls project, again, the retaining wall number five is going to be eliminated, and we are going to have about $3 million saving in the changes that is being proposed in the height and size of number three and four. And next project is South Side Project, again, these are the changes that's going to happen if we decide not to build the storage and restroom buildings at this time, that's the saving, we are adding the parking lot on the south side for 3.3, deletion or again, phasing of the football and baseball bleachers if we decide not to build them at this time is about $2 million. The reduction of the earth fork and grading resulted by changing the location of the softball field and relocation of the softball field, which obviously, again, we are showing this that we are moving this to another project because we are creating another project, this 3, $8 million is not necessarily a saving because we are moving that to the new project that's created at the bottom, that as I said, we are calling that upper field's future tennis courts. So we are adding six tennis court, we are reconfiguring the Heath Road, adding one restroom building, and relocating the softball fields to this project. And at the bottom, again, we are showing that $4 million saving, which is the result of not doing the mass earth, mass earthwork that was required by DTSC. So, I'm sure you are familiar with this table, this was in every one of our previous presentations, so this is basically showing the revised budget for each one of the projects. One other good news is like that we had an inspection by Calgem from our three legacy wells and they passed the test, there is, currently there is no leak on any of them, so there is no immediate need of abandonment of any of those, so that by itself was budgeted for $15 million on our previous presentations that that project can be eliminated because, again, there is no detected leak from any of those three sides, three wells. So, previously, our budgeted project was close to 170, 168,552, our new number is 132,331 based on all the changes that I was explaining. We have the future bond money, like the bond money that's left available is close to 102, we have received a seismic mitigation reimbursement for 16.2, so if we were going with all those projects that originally was planned, you were close to $50 million short, now, based on this reconfiguration, not doing the re-abandonment of the oil wells and not doing the mass earthwork at the site, you are going to be short close to $14 million.
That's a $36 million difference?
I mean...
Thank you.
I agree.
Looking for my response.
Really something.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
So, let's talk about timing, what's going to, this, what's going to do to the timing of us, this project, obviously, each one of these needs time to be designed, needs to go to DSA, it's not like we are, we would be able to start this tomorrow, and this is the proposed delivery method for each one of this project also, that we think the best way of doing this to make it faster. My suggestion and recommendation, or our suggestion as a team, is to do the upper field project as a design build, we have enough development in the design by DLR team that they can be the programming architect and we can put it out for a competition and technically get a builder, design builder to come and design and build it. I think the project can be done, like it's not really complicated in like three to four months and like maybe another five months for DSA approval, and we need to have like eight to 10 months for construction. Building C, and these are based on the conversations that we had with DLR, we think we need about six months to do the redesign and another six months to get the DSA approval, and it's going to, it may be a little bit shorter, but for now, I think like we need about like two years to 24 months for construction of that. As I mentioned, it seems that we don't need the line item three anymore, the latest development is that the legacy wells doesn't need to be re-abandoned, so that's the reason that you see that highlighted. The Grand Lawn Project, we think that project, the scope is clear enough and the design is going to be pretty straightforward, and this, that can be a design bid built, we can just put that project out for bid, and the low bidder is going to come and do the work. The South Side Athletic Fields, also, I think that can be another least-least bad project, I think it needs about four months or a little bit more as far as making the changes, about like two months for DSA approval, and if we don't decide to not to move forward with the bleachers, I think it's going to be about 12 to 14 months for construction, and if we decide to move forward with the bleachers, it's going to be closer to 16 months duration. The last two line items technically is broken down or either eliminated, and basically now is part of the project that you see on the lines above. Just to take a look at again what was explained, this is how we foresee that your high school site is going to look like when you have, when you're done with all these projects as we discussed. As you can see again, the lower parking lot is very close to the elevation of the Olympic Boulevard, there is a berm or like that green strip that you see between the two series of the parkings that bring the elevation a little bit higher, you are going to have another set of parkings, your baseball field stays as it was originally designed, the upper area, that softball field technically is where the maintenance and construction trailers are right now, they're portables, and the tennis courts are closer to the existing building and the new B3, B4 project. And the tennis courts are closer to the existing building and the new B3, B4 project. I want to open the floor for questions if you have any questions about this plan.
So I just wanted to mention, you know, just for ease of, of the public and the board. So as Amin mentioned in the previous slide here, let me just go back to this real quick in regards to the amounts that we are under. I just wanted to, I'm happy to say, you know, that, you know, being, going from negative 50 to negative 13 is amazing. But on top of that, as, as you recall, I've been talking about modernization funds in the past. And so I just got an update about two weeks ago where I met with our consultants that handle our modernization funds. And in 2025, we'll be eligible to fly for 26 million in modernization dollars. So when you look at it, you potentially at that point in time, now mind you again of that process, we have to apply for the funds. We can't apply until 2025. Then it's been typically taken about three years for us to get funds. You know, depending on the economy, it could be a little bit more or it could be a little bit less depending on how that all goes, you know, together. But that's exciting news as well, which essentially would mean for cash flow purposes, we'd have to figure out the intermediate time between when we get the cash versus, you know, when we need these projects designed. But I just wanted to make sure that you were all aware of that in regards to at some point in the future, when these, when we actually receive the funds for modernization, we'd have enough to get this done and we're hoping for some direction on this. So thank you.
Okay. Colleagues, I know we can all go down wonderful, happy news rabbit holes with all this. I want to have everybody have an equal chance to talk. So just please keep your questions brief and then we'll circle back for another round if you have more. So I just want to respect everybody else's time. Okay, Mrs. Wells.
Well, thank you so much. And it's really amazing. And I, you know, I know that you came into a project that didn't have a lot of information and it's taken a long time to even just find the information that you needed so that you could assess the situation and then to go out and rebid or to come up with these new numbers and then go out and find how we could do it in a better way so that it would be possible for us to get here. And it's really amazing and I really appreciate everybody's hard work that made this happen and your creativity and your persistence and your professionalism to work with all of the different agencies to find better ways to work with our city. I know you were also working with the city to see if there was ways that you could do it. And I think that you went around, you looked at every possible way to find solutions for us so that our dollars went to our kids and that they could really have the benefit of the programming. And I'm really, really grateful to all of you. So thank you very much. I, I like the new plan a lot. I think it's fantastic. I love that to hear Rafael that we are going to potentially have that 26 million down the road. Just as a, to start, I, I like everything in the plan that you're proposing and with the question to the bleachers, if we know we're going to be able to get those modernization funds down the road, I would add the bleachers in now and plan to do that because we know that the money will be coming and around that time, I think from a cash flow standpoint, you'll be okay. It sounds like anyway.
So Mrs. Wells, you bring up a great point. So we don't have to keep rehashing this. Are you guys looking for direction? So to that effect, I, I was going to chime in on that, but you brought it up. Bleachers, are we all in on bleachers?
Yes.
Provided we get the, the funding that we're.
Regardless of the funding, where are people going to sit?
Right.
Mrs. Wells.
We talked about phasing it in, but since we know that the money is going to be phasing in, I think we can plan to phase.
Right.
Well, the question I have is the bleachers we have right now satisfactory.
You're regrading a little bit, so I don't think, right? Yeah, you're regrading, the bleachers are going. We're putting in bleachers. And I assume Mr. Ellis that fields are useless without bleachers? Okay, thank you.
Wait, no, I, these bleachers are gone.
Mrs. Wells has the floor, so let me just finish with.
Well, you wanted to do the direction on the bleachers.
I want to do the direction on the bleachers and I'm turning it back to Mrs. Wells.
But I do have a question about the bleachers. That's why I'm asking about, that was my question about the bleachers. You say that the one, you have to do some work with the ones that are there now?
They have to grade underneath it.
They all have to come out.
Those are going to be demolished. So because the reconfiguration that that.
So they're going to be demolished. There'll be no bleachers then.
Right.
That's what I needed to know. Thank you.
You have direction for bleachers. Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
Thank you. I have, on this plan, when I look at the drop off in the front, I understand that it's required for DSA to have it adjacent to building C, the drop off that's in the front that we previously talked about, the 26 spots.
Yes.
Was there previously an ADA drop off in the front of the lawn?
There was some sort of, there is some sort of a strip of drop off, right?
That's still there, right?
No, we eliminated that.
As, as part of this value engineering, we eliminated that and we reconfigured this to have the.
Over here.
Can we get the slide back up, please? So we could look at the same thing.
I, I like this idea. It's hard for me to conceptualize it flat like this and in the 3D that it is, it doesn't look that appealing in the way it looks on paper, but I'm sure architecturally when you can show us renderings that it won't look like you just plopped in a little parking lot over there. So I would love to see those renderings when the time comes, but given that they're going, it's going to look integrated and beautiful. I really like that idea. I love that we're gaining all this parking. I was looking at my notes, I don't know where I put it, but it's quite a few additional spots that we're gaining.
Yes.
And move, it's just such a much more efficient way to do it. I love that we don't have to have retaining wall five and it's so efficient. I, it's really fantastic. So I really appreciate that as well. For the parking, I just want to ask, and I don't, you may have already looked at this, but I think I might have brought it up before. I don't know if there's any grant money or things of that nature where they put those sun shades up over that parking lot that you would now propose where retaining wall five was?
Well, we need to look into that further because per the mitigation plan that we have with DTSC, you are not supposed to put structures in that area.
Okay.
So, but we can definitely look into that to see if we can put like solars or not. But that would add a little bit more complication with DTSC because either you should have like lawn, a field or like hard escape on the Venecosite mainly.
That was my only question about that. I think this is really great. Thank you. I'm going to move on to everyone else can have their comments.
Thank you, Mrs. Wells.
Thank you again so much for all of this. I do have a handful of questions.
Of course.
To understand. The 16 million. Sure. The 16 million, have you already received the 16 million?
Yes.
That's in hand.
Yes, we actually have that. And you remember in the, in the previous budget presentation, it is in the fund 30, the fund 35 that we, that we show there. So it's, we've received it.
Thank you so much. Then in regard to the front lawn and the, I'll call it the mini lot in the front, I know that we talked about it last time because we were trying to mitigate the loss of the subterranean parking. But then now we have so many spots in the south side fields that maybe this becomes unnecessary. But I recall that you mentioned that the state requires a handful of ADA and EV spots. So my question would be that if from this portion, in the mini lot, if, if we as a board said, forget about it, what would you be required by law to put there? And is it something that could instead of being parallel with the street, could be perpendicular with the street, meaning parallel with the building so that they're up against building C if a handful of ADA and.
The idea of this, the way that's designed right now was to combine a drop off and parking to save more money. Because you had it like a strip of drop off adjacent to Moreno, like parallel to Moreno. This basically eliminates that and also meets the requirement of the state to add the ADA and charging the stations.
Question for you. If we, if we separate it, if we bifurcate the two concepts, was there any consideration where you have the almost full circle between, yes, exactly there.
The swim gym and building.
Yeah. Was there any consideration of doing a drop off there?
Um, Tim.
That's your fire lane.
Okay, so we cannot have that as, because the fire trucks should get into between those two buildings.
Okay. If we wanted to preserve the breadth of the front lawn, and I, I acknowledge I was the one that brought up the concern about the parking spaces and so on, but if we wanted to preserve as much of the front lawn as we possibly could because our community is not only so attached to it, but it is truly beautiful and it has so much, you know, prominence, is there a recommendation of another way where you could bifurcate the, the drop off aisle and the handful of state required spaces? Is there another idea?
I have to defer that to our design team, but again, I just want to remind everybody, this is just to make the most amount of saving. We can do everything that you want.
Yeah.
But everything comes with a dollar value.
Of course.
So it's either an or.
Yeah.
So do we want to finish everything or do we want to go back to the design that was basically over budget?
Right. Well, I'll ask my colleagues. I would love to consider an option that might be a little more beautiful and a little more pleasing to the eye and old school, but might cost us a little more too.
So Judy, I thank you. Much like Mary's bleachers, I'm going to call this Judy's lawn. And, and I do absolutely concur.
Yes.
That, that if, if we have a large slab of asphalt in the front, they're going to come with pitchforks and nooses.
Yeah. We know, we all love that front lawn. It's very meaningful.
It's beyond, so, and then Tim, you said you took the curb cut out?
Yeah.
I, what I, I've seen a lot of places in, around the city that actually have the EV charging right on the street where people park and you could just charge right there. I would rather have, have the curb cut back with the handicap right in front, the EV charger is right behind it maybe, whatever's minimum required and maintain that front, maintain that lawn. That's, I don't know how you feel about that. I know, I know I'm hearing at least from three of us that.
I'm open to it.
That we don't want to touch the, the lawn.
So my, my suggestion is sorry, if you are moving that direction, just have the idea that we are not going to do parking here.
Right. There's so much parking.
You got, you got enough parking.
Yeah.
I think you got more than what was on the one level and additional spacers which will compensate for most of the swim gym parking lot loss. So I think you've covered that.
Right.
So, and I'm, and because I'm respecting all of my colleagues' time, I just want to get consensus that should we have them go back, try to maintain the front lawn and try to pick up those requirements on the curb cut?
Please. Or in another way.
I mean, I just want to be clear, what, what you presented in the new plan provides 52 more parking spots than in the original plan. So if this new drop off area is 26 spots, we're still ahead of the game in the parking spots, even if we eliminated it, although we can't from a DSA standpoint. So when we originally talked about trying to do the drop off there in short-term parking, that the first goal was to bind parking because we were eliminating parking. So now that we have so much more parking, I'm comfortable with just doing whatever the minimum is we have to do here. And I would also assume that if we're doing the minimum there, that we would still have cost savings and that's the answer I'd like to know from you. Is that still a cost savings?
Yes, if we do the original drop off and not to plan to have parking here, definitely would make this area smaller. Because again, the idea, we were following the direction from the last study session that you want to have parking here. So if we don't want to have parking and we are just need to have the bare minimum of the charging and ADA, I think that maybe even be less a little bit of.
Now that we have all the south side spots.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're all in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay, you have direction on that as well. Thank you, you can finish up, Judy.
Thank you so much. In terms of the timing of all of this, just one second, I'm sorry, I'm going to.
You're looking for this page?
Yeah. Thank you. For the grand lawn, I'm seeing the four months, four months and six months, but what would be the trigger date for that to start? Four months, you know, from when?
From the day that you make the final decision that this is the way that we want to go. So now we have to go back, come back with this new design. So the day that you give us.
The green light.
Yeah.
Because when we had discussed it in the past in our sessions, I understood that you needed it as a staging for building C's construction. Is that no longer the case?
Well, with this new site, we can figure out a way to eliminate that need for building C because of now we are moving some stuff to the upper field. So yes.
Okay.
So we can do the lawn in terms of sequence before building C is finished?
The lawn, we, we may be able to do that, yes.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Great, thank you. That's great.
And just to clarify, that's, that's why we're seeking direction on, on several of these items so that we can then come with a little bit of a tighter timeline.
Thank you. And then can you advise how many ADA spots and EV charger stations do you know are required, assuming that building C goes up?
DLR team?
Well, it's a percentage, EV charges is a percentage of the number of slots you're putting in.
Okay.
If we don't tie in the south parking to building C, then we can go bare minimum.
Okay, great.
You tie in the south side to building C, then they'll count the number of slots there. Ask for 5%.
So what would be, hi, by the way, thank you, thank you to the DLR team for joining us.
So the requirements for EV charging is a percentage of number of stalls. If we include the south side, which is about 100 plus, then we take 5% of that. But if we don't include that as part of building C, then we're, we're good to go on, on providing bare minimum on, you know, the front.
Who, well, who determines if we can bifurcate them?
We are not, we are not planning to include that as part of.
We are not. So, okay, so then assuming that we disassociate them, do you know, and you can get back to us on this, do you know off the top of your head, what are the bare minimum requirements on these?
I'm looking right now at three EV charging stations and three ADA stations.
And they need to be directly adjacent to building C?
Yes.
Okay, understood. And so in which case, now that we're considering moving beyond the mini lot situation, it could be a sliver that goes up against?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much. In regard to the storage buildings, my concern there is if we do need them, if we decide that we need them in the future, do we have to lay the infrastructure now to anticipate them? And do we need them at all?
Well, I cannot answer, do we need them at all? I think you need them.
You would like those?
Absolutely.
Okay.
When you say that, that, when you did the presentation and you said those could be phased in the next phase, so I'm assuming that you would be having them prepared as you're building, you do the preparation that is necessary.
The site is open enough and these are small buildings and you can just be more creative. Like some of them can be prefabricated, the storage building that bring in install, it doesn't need to be like permanently stuck building. So again, we can come back with more creative ideas as far as, but I don't see any like restriction that those buildings cannot be built in future.
Okay.
Like for example. You can prep them for the future.
For example, as we're going through the Bulldog Aid Center, you know, it becomes apparent, it's not just plopping the building there, but there is the mechanical engineering, plumbing and so on. And so do we need to determine one way or another if we plan on phasing those in later?
Definitely would be better if you want to is like, but again, it goes back to the cost factor that do we want to bring the infrastructures to this location now or we want to just leave it for future and let it be done at that, at that time?
Understood.
This saving right now is not considering to bringing its infrastructure to these locations. Is not, is not, basically is the consideration that all of that is being done at the separate time.
Without?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, that's just something to think about. I feel like there's been such a shift in the, we thought we were going to be 50, 60 million over and we were really, you know, working with.
Well, if we go a step by step, you are going to be again 50, 60.
Yeah, I hear you.
And it also includes time.
Yeah, and time, I hear you absolutely, that's it, those are my questions, thank you so much.
Of course.
Thank you, Judy, Rochelle?
I'm really excited, I have to tell you, this is genius, you guys are genius and I'd like to compliment you and I have only a couple of questions. Uh, the swimming pool in the south field, nobody has said anything about that swimming pool in this discussion. In the cost of it or if it included in the south field, uh, I haven't heard.
It is included in Building C project and the reason that we didn't talk about it because there is no change associated with that, so it's gonna stay as it was designed.
So that's already been through DSA improvement then?
Yes.
Possibly.
But it still needs to go through the revisions because of changes that we are making to Building C, because it's part of that A number.
Okay, and the other thing, another question I have and it's been brought up, but I'm not convinced of it. During construction of Building C, uh, the space and staging necessary to prepare Building C and starting the lawn and safety and so on. I have concerns about that and I just expressing that right now because I think that's important. I am not convinced that students and and so on, because they're gonna be going in that way, I'm concerned about safety for the kids at that area.
That's one of the reasons that we are planning to do that project as least least big and as part of our pre-construction. We are gonna work very closely with that potential contractor to come up with a logistic plan. We have some ideas the how to attack the construction of that project, where to build first and move gradually toward the building. So we want to work closely with the potential future contractor to come up and resolve all the concerns regarding the safety of the students.
Okay, I quite didn't understand what you meant by the methane mitigation system by crawl space, uh, could you explain that a little bit more to me?
Yes, like this is not unique to Beverly Hills High School, like any projects or any construction around this area, they have to have methane mitigation system under the building. Because you have surface methane coming to the surface from the ground technically all around like Culver City, Beverly Hills, a lot of projects have to do that. Uh, one I, for, basically crawl space is like you have some opening under the building, like two, three feet that is ventilated. So that would eliminate the need of extensive plumbing and having the methane mitigation system to build to build the building on top of that.
Thank you, that's very kind. Another thing, I noticed the tennis courts, I love tennis and so on, but I remember once there was some basketball courts around, I don't see any basketball courts. Huh? No, 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 there were outdoor basketball courts, as I recall. Well, I know, but if there's classes in there and you know, I just, that's the point I'm making that.
There is no outdoor basketball court in these plans right now because of Building C.
Okay.
But can we clarify on that one, just to comfort Rochelle, from what I recall, Building C.
Building C will be like twenty-six thousand square feet bigger than the current Hanheim.
Is that right?
I think so, yeah.
I just also want to clarify for Rochelle, in the original plan, there were no outdoor basketball courts.
I thought I saw basketball courts on the original.
If you look on this.
You have it right now, you have.
On this plan, there was no outdoor basketball courts, this was the plan that.
But there were basketball courts before this.
They exist now.
Before we did a modernization.
That's all I'm just saying, that I remember basketball courts.
I think Mrs. Marcus.
I'm allowed to say what I think I saw.
So Mrs. Marcus, I think the question to ask would be directed to Mr. Ellis. And that would be, are there any current classes conducted on those outdoor basketball courts?
Can I use them for basketball, use them for pickleball? Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna put two pickleball courts up there because that's part of our JDA agreement. Um, the city wants us to put pickleball courts on one of our facilities, um, plus the DHPL, if they're required to use.
The outdoor courts are, okay.
So is pickleball off the table?
I, nothing's off the table, but it's just, it's just a matter of, uh, you know, relocating some space for pickleball, uh, to work with the city. So we know that that's really become very popular and there's a high need and so, you know, we're gonna continue those conversations. We we have, we we're really good about getting creative with our space.
I mean, we did ask, um, we brought it up in one of our last study sessions about was it possible for some of the tennis courts to also be able to be converted to pickleball? As, to make it more useful.
Okay, I have one more concern, and that is the Heath Avenue direction. I am a big fan, not a big fan, of coming out on Olympic Boulevard from that street. And I don't know if there's going to be another control or what have you, I know you can only turn right coming out of there. But if that traffic comes around the corner and you don't see it and so on, so I have. If that's an exit way or an exit egress or an ingress for that tennis, those parking places, I have concerns, I've just, I'm pointing that out.
This plan is not based on to using the Olympic as an entrance for the parking, but it's basically everything is gonna come through Heath. Because if you want to do that, you have to do through a study session and you need to get a permit from the city.
That was my question, there'll be no in and out traffic going through that alleyway?
It's gonna be a service gate and if basically emergency gate, but is not for public to come and park from that.
Okay, I I think that takes care of the questions that I had, thank you again for your presentation.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus, Dr. Stern?
Thank you so much, it's such a breath of fresh air to see this, um, it's very, the way you go through it is very transparent, I love. Uh, the packet is very good with the different, the various views. Um, and I think you you've really made good sense and I just want to make sure that my math is correct. So with the deletions, um, that you proposed, we'd be saving twenty-three million, but if we put the fifteen million in additions, are, we still save eight million? Is that, I mean, in terms of the?
Um, which is like.
Sorry.
I know what she's doing, she's taking.
It was just, the first chart, like the first table, yeah. So in other words, if you add up all the deletions that you recommended, that was, you know, that was twenty-three million in savings. Right, and then, then you also propose some very good additions that I agree with. So then, if you put that together, we would still have a savings of eight million?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, so that's good, so.
Does that include the four million for the earthwork?
Yeah, I think so.
That does nothing.
Oh, no.
Right, so it would really be twelve million.
Oh, twelve million, okay, so that's great. Um, and then, I was just gonna ask, so you're saying, Tim, that the the existing basketball courts that are out there, those ones that are on the pavement. They still will be, continue to be in use, um, for a variety of things. And there's no way to mitigate that or to make that a little more, um, easier on the eyes and all that, I mean, I know that it's a pretty rough place and. I I think that there still is a need for outdoor basketball and and the things that you guys use, but I'm just wondering if there's.
So.
Just repaved it.
Oh, I haven't seen that. Oh, good, okay.
And they'll be, they'll be used for a couple more years anyway, so, before they're.
But they will eventually be gone.
Yes.
Eventually be gone, and maybe repurposed for a pickleball court.
No, there there's no, there's no, there's nothing there.
Just gone, oh, okay, and I was also gonna say that I.
It's gonna be called, I think, Right Field.
Right Field, okay, that's good.
It's gonna be in the middle of one of your future fields, so those cannot stay.
Oh, I got it, okay. Um, I I also would be in favor of getting rid of the the twenty-six, uh, or that little, um, parking place there, but we already decided about that, so that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, thank you, um, couple of quick questions, some really, really good work here. We're losing a practice field up on the top level, so I do, I wanted to ask, we haven't had a practice field. So I was gonna ask, Tim, are there any ramifications of that, since we haven't really had it anyway, we've worked around it?
No, it's kind of a luxury now.
Okay. So it won't really be a loss because we're gonna have a second ball field anyway, so, okay. Um, just want to make sure that. The um, the south side parking structure, I think somebody brought it up about, um, solar covering over it. And I see almost every high school parking lot that's outside has it now. So I I wanted to find out, what does it take to get us that, what are our advantages in having it, our disadvantages? Because it seems like a wasted opportunity to have a huge open outdoor space that we could be, um, having solar at.
We definitely looked into that, but as I mentioned, again, we have to go through DTSC because the, per the current mitigation plan. You are not supposed to put any structure on those areas.
Right.
So we need to see first of all DTSC, accept to build something and because of the methane mitigation, how would that do? Because all those solars have foundation. So what are the requirement as far as the earthwork underneath, do they want us as to go another five feet again? We can do like a cost analysis based on, but again, currently, I don't think you can put anything because they don't want any structure in that area.
Okay, so just quickly, let me, colleagues, do you think it's worth looking into, putting the solar covers on that parking lot or not?
I I don't take any issue with it, but then what will we do with the solar energy that we harness? Where where is the end goal there, I'm just open, you know, I'm open.
I assume it would be tied into our grid, into our account.
There are two, three different type of agreements, you can basically, most of the time is connected to your system and you're using that. And if there is any surplus, you are selling that to the local energy company. There are other companies that work on lease, they come and install and they do maintenance for certain number of the years. And technically, uh, they are owning the energy, but again, it's very good cost savings, I have seen districts doing that. But in the first step for all of that, again, we need to make sure that it's feasible to do that because of the DTSC requirement. And we can look into that, that, I I'm almost hundred percent sure that they considered that as a structure, but they may not. And if they don't consider that as an structure, that would be a.
My my other, my other, in looking at the the plans, I would also say, there is the giant medical tower. Almost adjacent to what that lot's gonna be and it might cut your solar collection to half a day, so then it might not be worth it.
Yes, that's also need.
Somebody, somebody would have to run an analysis to see if it was even worth it. So I don't want to get too into the weeds unless we get a couple of quick questions answered. Can we do it easily and is it gonna be worth it for solar, otherwise let it go.
So that brings up a question quickly, is a lighting available in that area, or people need it?
Yes, we are gonna put lightings on the project.
Okay.
Right, I, Noah, to answer your question, I agree, I just think I, if we get the answer that it's not feasible, I don't wanna.
Yeah, I I agree, it's gotta be worth it.
But I definitely, if if we can, I think it's great, that's why I brought it up before.
Okay, so you do a quick.
Sure, yeah.
The the existing, you said we're not gonna do retaining wall five?
Yes.
There is a wall right now, an existing wall.
That's gonna.
Is that getting replaced?
It's gonna be fencing.
It's be fencing, okay.
Yeah. There is a wall at far end, close to the end of Moreno, that that portion stays, that basically holds the field side.
Yeah, no, I got that, no, I just meant the actual brick, that brick wall.
The brick wall is gonna come down and.
Because it has to come down, so, okay, good. Um, and the, um, sorry. Um, did we get final sign off from Cal Jam about those legacy wells?
Well, the, in their website, they are showing it's passed the test, so it basically, when they says passed, in my knowledge, it means that there is nothing wrong with the wells and there is nothing.
Okay, can we just, because we're gonna be doing site work, um, can we just confirm that is there, is there? Because usually there's a sign off, not a test passing, but I don't know, but I I don't know what they could have changed.
Well, we got in writing from WZI also that they're, because there is no finding, you may just want a backfield area.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to, um. And then the, oh, oh, colleagues, the the storages, the the outbuildings, um, we should give direction on those as well. So, um, and I would assume like the bleachers, Mr. Ellis is a fan of it, but what I would say is, this really hasn't had a chance, I don't know, to run through the athletic department? And the high school staff to at least see what they would feel is important at this point?
The parking idea was shared with the principal and he loved it.
No, not the parking, the storage buildings.
The storage building is, no.
Okay, because it's gonna affect athletics, so do you, do you guys want to?
My recommendation would be that you come back to us with what you recommend for the storage. If if we were to do some of that storage that would be necessary, it may not all be necessary. And if you could really look at each of these and consider what the increase in cost and time to complete the projects and. And what the best sequencing would be for that, then you can come back and let us know on that one.
Yeah, it is something that I mentioned also to our team when I did the pre-meeting, that we need to meet with Tim. It's just getting us, our schedules together because there's also some needs with the JPA as far as some of the the storage that they currently have and should have.
So maybe you should look at the plan and figure out where should the storage go and what's.
So I think, I think then then run that portion through, come back to us just on that, you have direction on the other issues. Um, and and as far as I'm concerned, we should, on everything else, full steam ahead. Um, so I know you have to fix the parking thing and the curb cut, but um, on that issue, let, hash it out with them, come back to us, let us know what you need. And then just the change in the price, which I'm sure is not gonna matter, because you know, Raphael will find the money, but.
Unless you think that this is gonna hold you up now, so.
Um, no, we can just work with Tim and just come up at least like, see, okay, which one is the most important one, incorporate like one of the restroom buildings and just plan for the future.
Perfect.
I'm sure we can come up with it. Like there are a couple of restrooms, that's the most costly because there is no infrastructure in that area. If like, we need to bring like sewer and water for all the way from Moreno. If we can eliminate those, I think we can just come up with one that's closer to the Moreno site and just maybe have like in one is storage for now, one is restroom building. And the rest of that to be planned for the future.
That would be great.
Can I just make one addition? I don't necessarily want to be minimalist on those, um, because this is gonna be an athletic pavilion that, you know, is gonna be the future of the jewel of our crown. And so if you've got, um, an A list and a B list, or you know what I'm saying, so that we can. You know, the necessaries and then the preferreds, that would be nice too, just so we have some choices.
We want to do right by the students.
Yes.
That's, that's really what it comes down to.
And our programming, yeah.
Right, and I don't, and it wasn't that significant of an additional cost as to some of the other things, so I think it really needs to be. Let's do it right the first time when we do it.
Agreed.
But let's get it done.
Rochelle?
About Building C and eliminating the underground parking, does that involve a lot of changes in the architectural plan and cause a lot, larger delay? Or is, can you do the, is the plan basically the same and you just?
The timing for the design was already anticipated in that the schedule that I presented. There is not really that much of architectural changes, there are a couple of mechanical and like the utility rooms in the parking that needs to, we need to find room for that. Inside the building, but beside that, there is not gonna be any change.
There should be a lot of delay in trying to make up, that's all I was trying to.
Um, it's, again, they still need about like, because there are structural changes, so it needs to, they need to recalculate the building. And it needs to be submitted to DSA, so.
I, and the flip side, Rochelle, we wouldn't be building a parking structure, so there's a time savings by not digging down.
There is a little bit of saving from the construction side, but again, it's gonna be about like six months at least for the design and like.
And you accounted for escalation, cost escalation?
Yes, the cost of the.
Pushing it out, right?
The cost of the residual design and escalation is already factored in into this save.
Okay.
And we do have some.
You have some other, other things to hit on before we.
I, and I have another question before we go on. Can I ask?
Yes.
Uh, can you go to the proposed packaging for future projects page? I think this kind of goes back to Mandy's question, so if you take our previous budget, trying to do all the things that were, that we wanted to do. Uh, was forty-nine point nine million and.
This one?
I'm sorry, yes.
No, it's his proposed package, I think it's.
Sorry.
Yeah, what?
Yeah. So we were gonna be forty-nine point nine million short, now we're gonna be thirteen, according to this, thirteen point seven million short before we get those other, uh, modernization funds. So that's a difference of thirty-six million, to answer the question.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Yes, again, if if you add all the findings, I believe she, her question wasn't considering the mitigation fund. That was like purely compared to what is added and what is deleted.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
The other question for, the other thing I wanted to point out is that, um, the seventy-six million from that original budget for Building C. From when we had our presentation from TCDS, that they had already escalated that cost up to, at, if it had been done today, a hundred and nine million. So they really, um, this is a big savings, a huge savings. I mean, it's a huge decrease in cost to do this, so I just really appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you, um, you had a couple of those slides, I know, so.
Yes, and thank you so much for the direction, we're really excited because then we can move forward and a lot of this and really excited about the future here. So, next slide that we wanted to present was regarding just some of the things that aren't as related to the bond. This first one is the, you know, in regards to the district office, and as you know, we've been, uh, talking about, uh, you know, relocation of the district office. Prelimarily, and these aren't final, I mean, we're still like looking at everything. You know, what we, what you see here on the screen is the the bridge area, uh, over at the high school. And we were asked, you know, to look at, can the district office fit into that section? And so one of the first things that we looked at, and we had talked with the board about, was moving our MNO and our facilities, uh, and construction team to that area. was moving our MNO and our facilities and construction team to that area. And so, we, we, if you could see there a little bit closer, we've kind of outlined, it's not gonna be those exact places, but we accounted for, what if we did move? So, just right there, you could see, it's pretty much almost fully occupied. We do have a couple more offices available, but it's not enough. So if you look at this little diagram to your bottom left, there's a total in, in the bridge, 18 offices available, eight cubicles approximately, two potential conference rooms and one potential break room. If we were to look at our needs for our maintenance operations, construction, fondue salari, and the needs of Ken Haas and his team, we need nine offices, one conference room for Ken, and one break room. And so, when we, when we get all that together, the space remaining would be nine offices, eight cubicles, one conference room, and no break rooms. So the total needs of the district office, you know, is 27 offices, about 11 cubicles, potentially seven, potential, in regards to conference rooms, although that would be consolidated depending on how big or small the rooms are. And, you know, we're really not sure about the break room, but the main point of this is to say, when you look at it, we really would not fit into this space. Potentially, a department might fit in here and reduce the amount of people moving to another area, like you could do some stuff like that, but in regards to just the general space in the bridge, that's kind of the limitation. We did look into Building C as well, and currently, there's really not much available space, especially with the changes and elimination of the, the parking lot and everything, and what has to happen. Essentially, there really isn't as much space in Building C at this point in time. So, this is, we just wanna kind of present this to you all to kind of, for the board to get an idea of where that's at, because that was requested in the past.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about that. You wouldn't move, I mean, this is an exercise you did just to kind of look at moving a department there, but I, is it even feasible that you would move MNO to the bridge?
Yes, yes. In fact, we, we really feel like that would be actually a really good idea, because they're currently like in trailers over there, we would eliminate those trailers. In fact, I really am thankful for Mr. Haas and his team, they're already working on that area to clean everything up, get everything up to, up to where it needs to be. But it would really be fantastic because we'd eliminate all of that area, we'd stop paying for all that rents that we're paying for, for those modulars, and be able to just move our, our team there as well as the facilities team as well and the fondue salari offices as well. So we'd be able to just have everyone in that section. And, and based on the needs that we have, it pretty much fills a lot of that area. But yeah, no, we would save funds by doing that, by not having to have those trailers.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And thank you for looking at that and doing that exercise, I appreciate it.
No, it was a great suggestion, a great idea, and that kind of birthed the idea of moving MNO and moving facilities and fondue salari, it's going to save us money, that really the exercise help, is going to help the district save funds.
Yeah, we've been wondering where MNO is gonna go, so, we solved that problem.
Okay, I know you had a couple more slides.
Oh, yes.
Is that something that direction is needed on to move MNO to that nook?
No.
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 And how much, can you estimate how much the cost savings would be by not using those-
All the trailers?
Yeah.
Mr. Haas?
I'm sorry, I, I was gonna say, we're talking about actually our management staff, not the actual maintenance team itself.
No, yeah, yeah, the management staff is what we're talking about.
Because those five cordials that the MNO staff uses are, we still need an all-percentage facility for them, those are actually working shops, which would not fit.
Yeah, so it was, it was the, the trailers, the MNO's management staff, sorry if I-
I see, that's why I asked you, because I couldn't imagine the shops moving into the trailer.
No, no, not the shops, no. We're talking about the tra, the other tra-
So it's just the offices that would move and the trailers for the shop would stay?
Yeah, so if you look at the layout, it's, it's for these, like, staff there.
So based on the plans that we looked at for the high school, where will those trailers for the shop be?
We're still looking through all of that, like trying to find, figure out the best way to relocate that.
Okay.
So we're still exploring that. But, yeah, no, so if, the best way to look at it is if you look at the diagram, you'll see the offices there, so.
And then, was there any consideration given to any other locations within the high school for potentially district offices? Like, for example, the area next to the STC in, in those buildings that are bigger rooms that could maybe become smaller rooms, or just because anticipating the next couple of years, we're gonna have thousands of square feet coming online with the Performing Arts Center and so on. So, my question is not just if we needed to move the district office tomorrow, but more like if we needed to move the district office in a year or two years, with the new, with the new areas and new buildings coming online, what are the options?
Yes, so, so it's, it's a little difficult to, to move that, in that way, because we, one of the main issues that we worry about with that, with like, with this, it's, it's a, it's a section of the campus or of the area where we can like control traffic. If we start kind of like point, putting staff members in different areas, it becomes difficult because we get a lot of traffic at the district office on a daily basis, you know, and so it would be difficult to kind of have, you know, someone, like for instance, let's say in Building C, you know, giving public the access for Building C while we have students maybe in, in the gym or, 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 you know, in the different areas. So it becomes a little difficult in that sense, just because it, it's better to have a section like here where it's like, okay, that's specifically for MNO management and construction and, you know, it's for them. It's not as much contact, but to spread them out, it just creates that issue for us where like, you know, the difficulty there. We did really go through the exercise though, so, I mean, because we really looked at the blueprint and we looked at the possibilities, and it created a lot more confusion about where people are going to go and really disconnecting departments. And it's actually the opposite that we're trying to do, is pull people together, pull HR with, with the business office. And so, but we did go through that exercise to look at what the possibilities could be.
Understood, thank you. Well, at least it led you to, as you said, the birth of the MNO management suite.
Yes, yes, and it's very helpful.
Okay, anything else you wanted to review? I know there were a couple more slides, I think it's just for our information, really.
Yeah, just, those will be real quick.
Yeah, these will be quick updates, so I just wanted to give you an update on the Beverly Vista Middle School Bulldog Aid modular. So, now that we've finally received DSA approval, which was great news, but it was a little delayed, we were able to come up with this timeline from our modular manufacturer, and the main date that we're looking at here is the August 9th date of when we'll be able to place the modular, which is a big milestone that we'd wanted to complete before the summer ended, so that we're not trying to drop a modular while there's still students on campus. So after that modular is dropped, there will be probably another month or so of work that will need to, need to be done to achieve substantial completion, but at least the modular will be there.
Great, thank you.
Yep. And then the final update was going back to our horseman shade structure and shade presentation. Ken Haas and his team are diligently working right now on finishing the reading green and the trees within that reading green. We expect that'll be done by the end of the summer. The two TK shades that we proposed at the, at the patio, unfortunately, we're not gonna be able to get those done by the end of the summer, but my goal here as of today is to get them installed during the winter break. So, we're shooting for that now to be the most least intrusive time to install those.
And are you, are you confirming that they can put two up instead of, we looked, last time we met, we asked about adding a second one, so does that mean that you can add two?
Yeah, we, we can add two, it was just a matter of the funding, but yes, we, we are able to add two. Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Fondue Salari, Will, Raphael, the whole team that came here today, DLR, all of you, we appreciate your presence and the hard diligent work you have done to try to see the rest of this project through to its completion. That being said, I'm gonna end this study session and we're gonna very happily wish our good friend Colby a happy birthday, and I'll invite everybody to join us in Merrily and Song, as, I don't know where he is, but I'm sure he's watching us.
Why don't we bring him in?
He's somewhere doing K-Bef, so, we can cut the feed, 'cause I don't need a shot of myself singing.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Okay, and let's, let's-
Thanks, everyone, really, thank you. We're lucky to have you.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear Colby, happy birthday to you.